Call this meeting to order. We're going to stand for pledge.
Pledge your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Yeah.
Everyone get a chance to read last month's minutes?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to cut previous month's minutes?
I make the motion.
Second.
The second.
Of July.
Of July. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Executive session discussion. We held interviews last Tuesday.
Yep.
Anybody care to discuss those? What we done here? To hire the two new employees?
Talking about likes and dislikes?
Sure.
Yeah, I like the, I thought they were all good candidates, but I like the first and last two the best.
I have mixed feelings about them both. I'm sorry, but I do.
Elaborate?
Yeah.
Huh? Elaborate?
Well, one of them works where my son works. So, I have mixed feelings because I kind of feel like we're coaching one of his people. And my fear is if he leaves there and comes here, um, the very unsatisfactory insurance, I'll put it that way, as opposed to what he has now, I'm just not convinced to stay.
Own development?
So, I just kind of have mixed feelings about them both. So, he's gonna, oh yeah, he's gonna be taking a pay cut, and if he gets, you know, has to have insurance to tell him it's gonna be pretty, pretty pricey as opposed to what he pays now. That's all I can say with that one.
Anybody did?
Yeah, I don't think the second one would...
A good fit.
Is feasible for us.
Do we need to vote?
Need to make a motion that you want to offer them the positions, yes, somebody does.
Can I get a motion to move forward with the offering of those two positions to the two gentlemen that we've narrowed it down to?
Which we're referencing to David and Walker.
Walker Shepherd and David Allen?
They're a member of the first name last name.
Did we decide on what their rate of pay would be? We didn't. We asked them what they wanted.
No, that would be...
Did we actually say what they're gonna be offered?
That would be something else that you probably should add to the motion, discuss and decide. I know one said he wouldn't be able to take it for any less than, what was it, 22?
Right.
Correct.
I don't think we should hire them in at more of a rate of pay than what we're paying our current person.
Current person is the street person, as far as that goes.
Their job titles carry higher pay, so that's gonna happen regardless. They're gonna make more money than Kyle.
I don't feel that's right.
Well, it's no different than any other job.
Just if somebody hired in at a position that was higher up than your position, they would make more money than you do.
I just don't feel that's right.
Cause Mike, Kyle's a lot closer to being able to get certified than they are.
But he doesn't want the job. He's expressed that to everyone. He does not want those jobs.
Cause they were offered to him as far as the water and the sewer, and he said he did not want it. He wanted to stay the, on the streets, on that side of it.
That'd be like the company, if the president quit and you hired one, he's gonna make more than the vice president, even though the vice president's been there for a few years.
I think we discussed a little bit after you left Tuesday night.
Could be.
We all, the four of us kicked it around to, what did we say, 22?
Yeah.
To them, to start, offer them a job of 22 an hour for both of them. And then, we also discussed, was that, was that that night too? About Kyle? Of bumping him up the point?
Yeah, you had mentioned it.
Yeah. Yeah, we were talking about. Discuss giving him an increase also.
Well, why did it carry on after I left? I mean, when I left, everybody was scattered everywhere, like we were not.
We were right, all right here.
No, there, and out there, someone was outside when I left. My Katrina was outside when I left.
Yeah, I know, we took a break, I know that part of it.
I left, cause I had to go get food.
So, we, we discussed that all three of them would be making 22, and then they would get $2 per, per certification for the three certs, once they get those.
So, the first thing on the table is the hiring of the two individuals, as far as one for the water and one for the sewer.
Right. Can we name one the, the water superintendent and one the sewer superintendent? Not the water sewer?
No.
We have to have a superintendent. The sewer operator is what you guys decided we needed, an extra employee, an extra sewer operator.
Right.
But, the way that it has to be, we have to have a superintendent and we have to have a street superintendent. That's the two that we have to have.
But like we discussed the other night, these, whether Kyle's the, or David's the street super, or water sewer superintendent doesn't give him any more power than it would Walker?
No, nobody's anybody's...
Right.
Quote unquote boss.
It's just title.
But the superintendent would oversee the other two, just like Ron did when he was here. He's not their boss, but he would make sure they did things right, and if they had questions, that's who they went to with their questions, and so on and so forth. So, that's why...
At least we have made it very clear, as far as that each entity, you know, will need to take care of their things, and then they all need to work together, as far as once they get their stuff done, that they need to help out on the others, especially, you know, especially with, like the streets. You know, if the water and the sewer only takes in the morning, then we should have three people out there getting the streets cleaned up, you know, and then same way, as far as when it comes to, Kyle's getting ready to do a discharge, or Mike and David's getting ready to start one, and Kyle's gonna have to do that. So, I mean, if the water and sewer's tired, tied up in the morning when that started, then Kyle would be out there taking care of that, but in towards the evening, if the water guy's tied up, then the other two would be, you know, it's gonna be a joint adventure on that side of it, and that's been made very clear on that side of it, that, you know, the five of us, excluding me, as far as what Walker goes, but the five of us are the bosses, and they need to do what their job duties list, and we do, as far as on the daily, and...
Right.
Helping each other out, so...
But that's why the pay's always been tiered.
Right.
Because we have to have somebody that's certified in water and sewer.
Right.
So, the superintendent we have to have, if the sewer operator doesn't like it and quits and wants to go back to his old job or whatever, then we still have our superintendent.
Yeah.
The sewer operator is an extra employee that you guys decided that we needed to add, to help with the sewer stuff.
Right. Well, they're both gonna wind up, are all of them, as far as that goes.
Right, for, to be able to cover each other.
Cover each other on vacations, and they're not here at this town, have to be tied to the town.
Just like when Ron and John was here.
Yeah, 24/7.
John still made less than Ron, even though he had certifications, cause he was still street superintendent, even though he could cover for Ron. Does that make sense? That's why he got Ron's pay when he covered for Ron.
Right.
That's why we have coverage pay.
Yeah. Which technically that would go away.
No.
No.
To, man, I don't really, kinda possibly, but anyways, as far as on the...
Do I agree with all of them making the same amount of money? No. Cause when it boils down to it, the superintendent, if something's wrong, they're the one whose butt is on the line.
Correct.
Well, I think from the get-go, especially if we, any given Kyle a raise as well, if they're all making the same amount, of course, they're gonna make more money, the other two are gonna make more money per their certification, so that's up to them.
And Kyle, you gotta remember, his pay comes out of general too, so you can't go crazy on giving him a raise, because if the money's not there next year, the money's not there.
Yeah.
And if you are, after you already give it to him, you gonna turn around and take it away. Cause we already know what happened with the budget this year.
Sure.
So, you don't wanna jump the gun and do something that we ain't gonna be able to cover.
But if we're still paying him a part, partially out of the sewer...
Right, that's what helped the budget this year, but I'm saying, if they don't give us any more than what they gave us this year for next year...
But I mean, if he gets his sewer license, we'll still be able to pay him that extra out of the sewer.
You have to divide his pay up different, and you can't do that if he's going to keep his title.
Cause it has a street superintendent.
Do you understand what I'm saying? You can't, just cause he gets a certification, if he wants to keep his title as street superintendent, then that's where the majority of his pay comes from, is general and NVH, because he's just the assistant sewer operator. So, just cause he gets a certification, I can't pay any more out of sewer that's not justified. I'm just telling you what the state board of the cameras is gonna say.
If we were giving a raise...
I'm not saying you can't give him one, but a $4 is a big jump.
Then how are you paying the other two if one's...
So, the other two will be coming out of...
Sewer and water.
It's sewer and water on...
And water, okay.
Yeah, as far as...
But then, he's a superintendent, and then the other one isn't.
One's gonna be the sewer operator, and the other one's gonna be the utility superintendent.
Superintendent, right.
So, it's still utility pay.
That's not budget money, where the streets is all budget money on that side of it.
But if Kyle works sewer, shouldn't his hours be changed the other way?
His, part of his pay is split out of sewer. It's already like that.
I'm just asking questions, Kyle.
When do we find out, when is the budget? When we gonna find that out?
You mean, they would, not till the end of the year, before they tell you what you're gonna have for next year?
Alright, so we got one...
Cause the workshop isn't even, is next week after next, I think, and we don't even adopt it until October.
Okay.
So...
I don't know if this is possible, but could you do it on an annual basis, with the understanding of you will get it if we get X amount from the state? Is that how it works?
Yeah, but even if we get it this next year, that next year after that, it may wind up being cut.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, if you could do it annually and say, your raise is contingent on these things happening. If they don't happen, we can't pay you the extra, but we want to help you when we can.
Right. But even if it goes up this year, that next year, it could actually minus double what we got this next year. So, I mean, instead of being at $10,000 this year, well, it could be $8,000 next year, you know?
Well, that's what I'm saying, then he wouldn't get that raise that year.
Like a stipend.
Once you get a raise, you get a raise. You don't have it taken away unless you're...
Right.
Right, like for my job, I have, I'm a contractor, and they don't like to give much raises, but they looked at what I've been doing, and they decided they do, this whole year, they would do a stipend, and I got an extra amount every month. And then the next year, they had, it was taken away at the end of the year, and they had to decide, they had the money, and it was warranted, and they did it again, but I know it's not added to my salary. With a budget, we have... I don't know why you have to do it. We have appropriations, and whatever is, they say you can spend that year, that's all you can spend. So, Kyle's raise, you wouldn't be able to give him one until next year anyway. You ain't gonna be able to give him one now. Not with as tight as the budget was for this year. I've got my fingers crossed that it don't go negative the way it is now, before the end of the year. Unless, maybe a dollar, you could give him a dollar raise, if you wanna give him a raise, and hopefully that won't cause too much issues, but I can't promise anything.
I think that's terrible. Somebody else can tell him. Cause I mean, it's losing the coverage, quote unquote, coverage pay, and, yeah.
But that's gonna continue for a little bit longer, as far as on that side of it.
We've gotta train them how to do stuff before Cecil says coverage pay.
Yeah, the, the morning checks, or the daily checks that Cecil did, and we talked about that, and he said it took him with Ron about a week, as far as on that side of it, on that, so I mean, even if, I think the one's able to start immediately, and the other one's still three or four weeks out on that side of it, so the one could technically be able to take it over, possibly by the end of next week, on that, but there's still, I mean, you got the meter readings and stuff like that, which is a lot more simplified, which would have to reach out to...
And that was always part of the street department, street superintendent's duties anyway, that's not something that they got coverage pay for.
Right, that was just part of the...
That was their duty.
Yeah.
So, you wanna move forward with the two? Yeah. See if they'll come in and take the jobs.
Whoops.
Save the visas.
I need to get a motion to offer the Walker and David Allen the jobs.
A motion we offer these gentlemen the job at 22 an hour?
Correct.
And a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Figured I'd ask before I wrote it down. You said both at 22? You're gonna start them both the same?
Even though one has more...
Other one either another.
The other, and we'll get his butt in trouble if the other one does something.
I would say, how do you determine who actually gets the superintendent side of it?
I think it's just gonna be a title, is all it's gonna be.
Yeah, but someone's still gonna get, have their butt in trouble when things don't go right.
Yeah, cause they're both gonna wind up having their certs at the same time on that side of it, so I mean, it's...
Still that one name, only has the superintendent behind his name.
Yeah.
Just like your guys' selves up there.
Either one of them.
Everything goes to Shane if there's an issue, cause he's...
No, no.
That's actually not how it goes, they're all on the same level, Tony and Phil, Shane don't have any more authority than anybody else.
The only thing I do is run this clear meeting, that's all I do.
Kinda.
The only problem is, the superintendent's gonna be in trouble with the state, and his license is gonna be on the line.
Right.
If state comes down on them, it's all of them, not just one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and I think, I honestly feel either one of them, as far as on the title goes...
Can both of them look, be looked at on both jobs, and then determine who gets the superintendent's job?
Like a probation period, like thirty days?
You wanna do that?
Thirty twenty, maybe.
You guys can, after they go through the trial, then you decide.
Take a base, and who's, gets their certifications and things, right away.
Well, I mean, as far as that, it's at least a year minimum, as far as on that side of it, so I mean, we could actually, could we do a year, maybe a year review on that side of it, and see how their first test goes? You know, all of us getting together and talking about as far as their work performance, as far as staying busy, what they've been doing, you know, extra stuff that they've been taking care of. I'd say if, I'll make a motion that we do a year review, as far as that...
And you don't even have to make a motion on that, just a gift for now, saying we need to have an executive session to review our employees.
Yeah.
Simple as that.
Yeah, make that determination.
Yeah.
That's what I think needs to happen, then.
I do have a question, do you still want that me to contact Aubrey, as far as after they get your year, after your, you wanna make it to where after the year review, when you give them their titles, they have to work for the town for so long?
Yeah, I mean, as far as the no-convie calls, yes, and ask...
How many years do you want her to make that for?
I'd say a minimum of three, as far as on that side of it, you know, I mean, it were from three to five years, on that side of it.
Okay.
Cause I mean, we're paying for all their trainings, all their tests, and all that, so...
I wanted to know when I sent her an email on that one.
Yeah, so yeah, we'll get that, I mean, as soon as, as soon as it's drafted up, and I talked with both of them, as far as on that side of it, and they agree with it, as far as understanding it, and I actually mentioned it to Kyle also, and he was perfectly fine with it also, you know, where he gets, you know, six months from now, he decides he gets his sewer license, they can't just automatically quit and go elsewhere, even though we've paid, you know, out quite a bit on his classes and stuff like that, so...
Right.
Moving on. Dump truck, Mike, that's you.
Yeah, I guess that would be me. So anyways, with going from two town employees, as far as the water, and then the street superintendent, we had two vehicles, and we also had the dump truck. Dump truck is old, it's in pretty rough shape on that side, I mean, it still runs, but as far as getting into service on a daily basis, it's not really feasible on that side of it, so I was looking at possibly one of two things, either just how are I selling the dump truck, or trading it in, and looking at another service vehicle that would be used by the sewer department on that side of it. Me and Shane, or anybody, as far as anybody you know, lot wise, letting us look for it instead of our employees, that would be time management better for us to look for it, and not them, because then they could spend hours upon hours searching on that side of it, you know?
Yep. Replace the dump truck with another drivable vehicle.
Another pickup truck, and put a plow on it, cause this dump truck has a plow on it now, but we would wanna put a plow on the new one, and not the water truck, so...
Right, the water truck, no bringing, except for, while we're talking about it here real quick, so Kyle had said something to me two weeks ago about the water truck, somebody hit a rock or something like that, I told him to get ahold of Wetzel Service Station, or whoever, you know, on...
You're getting ahead of yourself, that's in department reports, that's not on the agenda.
Department report, alright, told you that.
No, you did not.
I did, right, down here in the water department.
No, you didn't.
Anyways, can I get a motion that we...
Replace the dump truck?
Replace the dump truck.
I'll make a motion where we replace the dump truck.
Well, while I'm on that...
Nope.
Stop.
Hi, boys.
Stop.
The dump truck is used for the leaf collection, so we will also need to buy a dump trailer, which would be, we could mount the, uh, leaf box on. So, I, we were thinking, replace the dump truck with another pickup truck, and a smaller dump trailer, that way we could still do the leaf collection.
Okay.
So, can I get a motion for that? That we start that process?
I make a motion, we're looking to buy a dump trailer.
And?
Replacing the dump truck.
Replacing the dump truck.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, leave by call for day's donation. You wanna touch that, or?
It, we're good to go, you guys just need to decide what you want to donate this year.
Do we want to donate the same amount, which was $2,000?
That we did last year.
That we did last year.
I make a motion, we donate $2,000.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Transfer resolution?
Did you say that? Okay, just making sure. That's me, sorry. Could you vote yea on that donation? Yes, okay. The resolution is the fire department's insurance line item, with them removing the old truck that they got rid of, and adding the new truck, um, that went negative, so I need to do a transfer, and it's gonna come from a different department, so I have to do a resolution for it. So, the resolution reads as such, be it resolved by unanimous agreement, that the town council of the Town of Fountain City, Indiana, as follows, that it needs, that the need exists to transfer funds within the budget, said transfer will benefit the welfare of the citizens of the Town of Fountain City, said transfers are from appropriated funds, and that no additional appropriation is required. Therefore, $3,190.33 from Fire Territory Equipment Fund is transferred to Fire Territory Insurance Fund effective this day. So, I just need a motion.
Can I get a motion for the transfer?
I make a motion to make the transfer over the additional insurance cost.
Is that because the truck, why did it go up like it did? I'm just...
I mean, it was negative anyway, because insurance goes up every year, and so that what was in there for the budget wasn't enough, and then when they done the change, I got another invoice for an additional amount, so...
Sounds like my interest coming.
And I usually have to do it every year for the fire, for the insurance, and it's just...
And the truck years was the same, so...
You guesstimate, well, it was about the same amount that they took off, and then I had to go at, turn around and repay it again.
Oh, we got a motion on the floor, got a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sustained. Uh, department reports. Hubble Reid, Officer Martin, Marshal Martin's here. Deputy Terrell has completed all of his training, and is now certified law enforcement officer through ALEA, he has been out...
Two weeks now?
Mm-hmm.
This last weekend was the second weekend, so he's back.
Yes.
Mandatory training has been assigned. We've got one reserve hired, Aaron Wilson, and the, how many other ones were there?
There were three others, two of them didn't pass the background or anything I got, and one declined the offer.
So, how many reserves do we have now?
One reserve right now.
Well, two.
Two?
Two.
I've got two more applications I'm going through now.
Anything else you need to add?
Nothing else.
Pretty cut and dry there. Good deal. I have nothing for the fire department.
For the street department, uh, park cameras, all that got installed and it's all op- operational now. Um, Kyle said he started working on the weed eating of the curbs and cleaning up the streets and the drains. Uh, he's been working on from the last couple storms, making sure, getting all the branches cleaned up and stuff like that. Um, they patched the pothole on East North Street and that, and then, go ahead.
Don't go from the street department.
I'm not.
Are you done with the street department?
What do you add?
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, we got some bad news. The grant was submitted for Thursday.
Friday.
Friday.
Was it Friday morning?
I got the app.
Well, it was actually.
The emails came through that the application was submitted Friday morning.
Okay, it was submitted Friday morning. Trina left at, Friday was her early day, so it was what, two?
One thirty, I think, somewhere around there.
And she got an email late midday. There were some things that were off, a couple pins on street sizes or sidewalks here that weren't there or gonna be there. Whatever it may be, but she didn't get it till Monday morning, so our application pretty much got put in the shredder Friday afternoon. So we're waiting till the next round now to do the street project. Which we will gain more money, so we can ask for more. Or our, we'll be able to put more towards it.
The distributions and NVH that we get every month, so that'll accumulate until the next round, so we can ask for more.
And when is the next round?
December, maybe.
They have two a year.
Yeah, like July and December, I think is when it is. So, I mean, it's, there's money there and they're not real fought after grants do.
I don't know why NDOT only sent the email to the Fountain City email address, when I had nothing to do with the application or filling, preparing it. I didn't submit it, nothing, but they only sent it to me and nobody else, so. Nobody knew that there was errors that had to be fixed by five o'clock Friday.
So there's.
They sent the email at three thirty, and it had to be fixed and resubmitted by five o'clock.
Yeah. There's five streets on the, that we're going to, going after right now. And, so I mean, it's not like the whole town was gonna get done. We're not gonna go back and tear up stuff that.
It's already done.
That's already been replaced when they done the storm work, okay, so.
So was the deadline Friday?
The deadline was last Friday.
When could it have been sent in?
Last Friday.
Just Friday? Could it have been sooner than Friday?
They, they submitted it Friday morning, because we were behind the eight ball, because the ADA compliance plan was not put together until last, we voted on it last month.
Yeah.
So, it's just, it's, it's a very lengthy process, and then once they got it all on paper, then they had to transfer it all over into the state portal.
Okay.
And, yeah. That's what I was told.
I don't know, so I guess the next time it'll be put in sooner than.
No, so you have a limited time, an opening, and that's it?
They opened it to, to submit like Thursday and Friday, I think is the way it is.
Thursday and Friday, so it's been submitted on Thursday. May have gotten back in time where you could have resubmitted it?
Quite possibly.
All I'm saying is, probably a little earlier than.
And I think.
And I know by experience, that I have a tendency to do that. It's probably not a good idea.
All of our ducts are kinda in a row and we know what was wrong before.
Right.
So now it's gonna be a fix it now, and then as soon as it opens.
As soon as it open.
They submit.
Time.
Right.
They send it back to send, yeah, cause you know they're gonna do it.
What's the latest time they can send you any more changes you need?
It could be at that three thirty and you have to resubmit it by five o'clock.
They have to send them to you by three thirty.
Well, I'm just saying it could be, it could be.
Right, the state.
The way it was last Friday, so whenever they wanna send it to you, I guess, looks like.
I guess the state could send it at four thirty if they wanted to.
So that means somebody'd have to be here, taking this or the email till five on that day.
They need to make sure they includes another email address besides the Fountain City email address.
Cause the changes that need to be made wasn't on Trina or any of us. It was on the engineering side of things.
But they just had the wrong one, yeah.
And why, I think one of them, the street length was pinned wrong or.
It was too short.
It was too short, so I, it's just minor thing, I believe. The major stuff is covered, the ADA, ADA compliance, because that was a big thing with the state, with the NDOT Community Crossing Grant, that we had to have an up-to-date ADA compliance plan. So that's taken care of, that's all done. So we're moving, moving in the right direction. So, that's all I had on that, sorry.
Okay, no.
Sorry I stopped you.
Nope, that was at the end of it. So on to the water, um, Kyle had Cobalt, right, came in and helped uh, fix a water leak at Green and Hartley, got that fixed, um. The parts that the towns have always had has been very minimal, so we have made a priority to make sure that we have multiple on hand at any point in time to where we can start fixing stuff ourselves instead of hiring her, you know, subbing it out, so. He has ordered spare parts for all the meter pits, everything that's inside of it, water lines, couplers, all that stuff. Um, the water department, it looks like they backwashed twenty thousand gallons of water. Uh, filtered water, filtered water plant this month, so. I don't know what our water usage was, if that wasn't on there as far as this month.
Um, real quick on the yard, on the water side, I talked to Cobalt and I've talked to Scott Fisher with Indian American. No.
Indian Earthworks.
Indian Earthworks, Jesus. Um, they are both aware of all the yards that need to be fixed. Their, both of them's concern is, we're in the dry season of the year. There's no point in them coming in and putting anything down with the winds are dry. But they said they will, it will be fixed in the next, by fall.
Which, as far as back to the street, you know, but with Cobalt, when they put the water lines in there on Green Street and then also on Walnut, the ones that are plugged up, um, I was over there with Bob cause he was cleaning his curves and all that, and uh, he started digging it out, and it is literally packed full of the gravel that they used. So we need to make sure that we add that to Cobalt to come back in and clean out the drains, cause they're completely plugged up.
And Cobalt took down a fence out from between me and four oh nine, uh, line behind me. They lost a piece of the top of the fence. They put a rust, rusty pole back up and the fence is not hooking to the pole, it keeps coming down. So they need to replace what they lost in the process of it being down. I didn't know it was down, cause I hadn't been out to that corner of the yard. And I told Cobalt, but he said not gonna answer.
Okay. Okay. Yep.
Okay, okay. So that was on the water. Oh, on the water side of it, reference back to the truck, um. Kyle had mentioned it to me a couple weeks ago, as far as that something, someone hit something and the steering wasn't quite right. I told him he'd reach out to Wetzel as far as he get in there, get it serviced on that side, get it looked at. Checked with him last week, um, called him, met him up there, went ahead and took a look at it myself, he can see where the outer tie rod and then also the bar's been hit. Um, explained to him what it was, told him to call Wetzel at that point. He turned around, reached out to Wetzel. Wetzel was thirty days out. Trina gave him a number for up in Lynn, a company up there that's getting it the truck in next week, I think it is.
Didn't tell me when he got it in.
Next week that it's going in to get that tie rod, you know, the front end. Anything that's been, you know, replaced and also getting a new alignment on it, so that truck will be up in.
It's A to B Auto in Lynn.
In Lynn, who's doing it.
Northeastern Gravel.
Cause Wetzel was, I think, a month out as far as getting it in with them on that side, so. Trina had the number for theirs, so they're getting it in. They will take care of all the parts, take care of that, and make sure it does have an alignment where we don't have to mess with anything else on that side of it. Any other? So on to the sewer department, um. Ordered new chlorine for the discharge at the wastewater plant on that side of it. Um, on, let me see, so it looks like they're wanting to change the way that they're testing on the chlorine out there, the.
Yeah, I told him that that's not something that you guys have to.
Yeah, he just wanted to bring it up, so as far as so, cause Mike and Doug, they're the actual overseers right now, and it's something, I guess it's a little bit more simpler.
Yeah.
But yet more thorough on the test, so they're looking at getting some new, um, testers and HP meters on that side of it. Um. And also new chlorine meter for out there also, starting on.
He did, does he have a price?
Um, so, well, it's. Yeah, for the chlorine meter itself, it's gonna be four hundred fifty-five dollars. Then the HP meter is gonna be a hundred and forty-six dollars.
So you guys need that.
So I need, need a motion for, to purchase the chlorine meter for four hundred and fifty-five dollars, and that's through US Blue Book.
And that's where we get all our stuff from, so that's why I told him he didn't have to necessarily get any other quotes, cause that's who we've always used.
I need a motion to per- to purchase the meter and.
The HP meter for one forty-six. PH.
The HP meter and the chlorine.
Meter.
The pH meter and the chlorine.
Yep.
I need a motion for those.
I make a motion that we purchase them.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Starting on Monday, they're gonna start dis- charging the lagoons on that side of it, um. There's gonna have to be three tests done during the day. One of them, first thing in the morning, to check the levels of the chlorine and I'm not sure whatever else, but there's gonna be three tests tomorrow, like he's gotta do it first thing in the morning, he's gotta do it noon. And then with his time stopping at four o'clock, he will have to come back in and do it again at six thirty. So he wanted me to pass that along to you guys. As far as what they discharged last month, they discharged five hundred and seventy-six thousand gallons. Um, they're looking at bringing the lagoon level down about five feet. That's their goal, to try and get it down to where it can build back up, I guess, so. But they're gonna get the, it's not high, but yet they wanna get the level down just a little bit more. And that's what's on the sewer.
I have something on the financial side, or clerk's office report if you guys are done with those. I need a computer. I've already contacted Joe, so he could get one built for me and have it ready to bring in. But I already told Shane that, because I do it the way I'm supposed to, I was gonna bring it up at the meeting.
Yep.
Um, he hasn't gave me a direct price yet, but I want to know if you want me to use AR, ARPA money or Edit money to pay for my computer. The reason being is my Office 365 won't update. And there's a Windows eleven update and my processor is, um, too old to take the update, it's not compatible. So. I can't print documents from my computer, I have to go to Michaela's, have to email it to Michaela and then have her print it, because I can't print more documents.
Can I get a motion to, to purchase Trina a new computer and where to pay it from?
I'd say that's.
All the other upgrades we used ARPA, so.
I'll make a motion to use ARPA money to get Trina a new computer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You're allowed to leave that, but that's my opinion. Cause you need that computer to do your job every day.
Yes, I know, but I.
Uh, business.
Cross a heist and.
Anybody have anything?
I've got, um, an issue, I think maybe a liability for the town. Just the other night I was walking the dogs and the lot, um, on the west side of Front Street. You know, where that barn, green barn used to be in that open lot. Um, I assume the town mows that?
Nope.
No, who mows that?
That gentleman sitting right behind you.
The lion's.
The lion, that's the lion.
The lion's.
Okay.
That lot. Well, you may have a liability then, cause when it got mowed, the, the grass was in the road. And if somebody were to, you know, wipe out on a motorcycle, cause grass was in the road, I, I don't know for sure, but I think you would be liable for that.
Yeah.
And that would be a, that'd be a simple thing to keep the liability down.
That's a state law.
Wow, that's all the town ordinance as far as blowing grass into the street, so, Steve, could you?
I know we will.
Yeah, keeping an eye on it.
Okay. Yeah, I'd never seen it before, but I thought, you know, that's, somebody needs to know about it.
On that area, I've been talking to Kyle. It seems like all the gravel keeps getting pushed out of the drive for the bulk station, so. He's gonna work on trying to get all that gravel pushed back and off of the road there. You know, it looks like it's all going down there. Yeah, probably. Anything else?
No, I just was concerned, so.
Anything, young lady?
No, I opened my mouth, believe me.
Do you two, oh, sorry.
Okay, I've got something. I was kinda doing a little bit of research on the feral cat problem. We definitely have one in town. Um. There's definitely some fleas around, I think they're, I think it's definitely growing. Um, Indy has an Indy feral program. I don't know about this county or this side of part of town. But I was thinking it's just all of Indiana, of all of Indiana, but I guess it's just in the central part. They catch them, have them spayed or neutered. They have a special program of like twenty dollars, uh, a cat, and then they put it back out where they found them. And eventually it just goes away.
I have two feral cats that were at my house when I moved there.
Yeah.
I took them and spayed and neutered them. They're, they have flea medicine on them all the time, but they won't come in my house, so I can't. They have, I.
Yeah.
You're taking care of them.
There used to be an agreement with county, but they do not do it anymore.
Oh, they say all the shelters are full, aren't they, Karen?
Oh, yeah.
They won't do anything though.
I don't know what to do, it's just getting it out of hand, and, um.
I have an idea, but.
I know.
I know, I'm a neighbor that had, they already got fined for what they did, but.
Being, you know, the town hearts was right behind me, I can't do what I have to do.
I know Winchester takes, they have a program up there with Purdue, but it is like fifty plus dollars per animal as far as on that side of it, so as far as.
I mean, Winchester said they'd be gonna do it, but it's, it's not gonna be.
It's, it's not gonna be free on that side of it.
And I know a few farmers, if you could catch them, would take them.
Right, and, and that's, that's one thing that's said in here was feral cats are not ever gonna be house cats. They're not gonna ever be adoptable. Best thing to do is.
There's a place on.
Find barn. You know. But there was a, there was a mother cat that had her kittens in one of those, um, buildings that. Cummins Real Estate? Has over on Vine Street, and the mother ended up dying, and there's like seven kittens running around.
Yeah.
And, yeah, it's.
Plus another litter happened.
Yeah.
No advisors.
There's just so many cats running around, it's like, oh my gosh. And we have miniature schnauzers and they love to bark with any little movement of anything, and so they get anywhere near the end of our yard and they're just barking like crazy, and it's like, oh my god. And then everybody else in the neighborhood.
Well, if you happen to have across a program that, you know.
Doesn't cost anything.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, I know, it's gonna be a cost.
Yeah.
Everything costs something. Pre means it's costing something to somebody eventually.
But there's programs that.
Right. I'll, I'll do some research and see what I can find out, because there's. That seems like a good idea, and if we, even if we, and I can bring it up at our community, um, group meeting
Yeah.
on Thursday and see if there's something, cause I know we wanna kinda try to get in touch with some of the farmers around. Maybe they would.
Right.
Take some of these, you know, if we got them taken care of and.
Yeah.
Maybe we could have a fundraiser to come up with money to take care of them.
How you gonna know if you're catching somebody's, being taken care of and being fixed?
There's not.
They're.
Well.
They can't wear their collars 'cause they get caught underneath the fence when they go back and forth.
Well, there's, there's gotta be a way. We'll figure it out.
Okay.
But.
'Cause I've taken care of these cats for three years since I've been here.
Right.
Mom takes care of two families that are feral.
Well, it's a, it's a communication thing then. You have to go around door to door and talk to people and, hey, you guys, where are they, you know? This town isn't that big.
Mine are at my back door at six thirty in the morning.
Yeah, I know. Coming ours and they'll pull out the dog food and they'll chase mom.
Where's my food?
And where mine are.
Sam, do you guys have anything?
Nope, we're good.
Good? Uh, okay. Can I get a motion for, to approve pays, claims and payments?
I make a motion where approved for claims and payments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I didn't ask for a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need to adjourn. Thank you, Officer.